On March the seventeenth, one great St. Patrick's Day. I was a little disappointed that the Otter Tail River was not green, but maybe next year.
I think our water department's okay without it being green.
Okay.
Just use Lake Alice, it's okay.
So we'll call this meeting to order. Our invocation this evening will be done by our chief financial officer and director, Bill Somwell. If you rise, we will do the pledge of allegiance following.
Your honor, pray with me. Dear Jesus, we thank you so much for this day you've given us. We thank you for each day that you give us and the gift of life, Lord. We thank you for the city of Fergus Falls and all that you have blessed this city. Father, we thank you for the mayor and the city council and their willingness to serve. Lord, we pray now for your wisdom and direction for the council. I pray that you would open doors of opportunity for this city and just give us all wisdom and your direction. We pray this now in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we will call the meeting to order and roll call.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 We will have the open forum. If anybody cares to speak to the council on an item that is not already on the agenda, please step forward and state your name. Nobody wishes to come forward? All right, we will move on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would somebody care to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laurel. Any comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Public hearings, we have none this evening. We have no bids to award and we have no petitions and communications. There are five items on the consent agenda, which is posted on the board. Would somebody care to make a motion? Resolution to approve those?
I'll offer the resolution to approve all five.
Thank you, Laurel.
Second.
Second, Scott. Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution setting the 2025 Fergus Falls Aquatic Center admission rates. Would somebody care to make that resolution and then we can have some discussion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. The resolution is set. If anybody cares to have any discussion, Guy will be able to answer those questions fully and comprehensively this evening.
Your honor, my question was how did we come up with the rates and are they open for discussion?
It is a recommendation from the park board, but for sure they're open for discussion. We looked at fourteen other cities around the state in the region and we set the rates based on those and then taking into consideration that our facility is brand new and thinking that that was a fair and affordable rate for our citizens.
Thank you. I looked at it a little bit differently and please correct me if I'm wrong. In today's world, I know many kids that are fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old and they'll go have a special coffee for ten bucks. And I understand the newness of this and if you will, wanting to have a tickle rate for this. Just quickly, in comparison, ages zero through three with a paid adult would be zero. And again, ideas of being children the age of four, five, six, seven, pardon me, four, five, and six is five dollars with a paid adult. And help me when with parents, it's been a while since I've had young kids, at seven, eight, and nine, I would have eight dollars. And then from ten on, it would be ten dollars. I'm not so sure who and what parent would like to see children at an age not being adult-supervised. Seniors would be if they had a paid child with them, it would be eight, and if they were there, it'd be ten. Secondly, have we thought of anything in regards to the number of days it's going to be open and where a break even is? Do we have a budget on the expense side yet?
We do, and there's some projections that were put out early on by the design company. And so Bill's looked at that in comparison to what we're setting or proposing for rates. And he could speak to that if...
And the expense budget is what was included in the 2025 budget, so we haven't changed that at all from what's in the 25 budget on the expense side.
You remember what it was, Bill?
Not off the top of my head.
Hundred, hundred and fifty, one twenty-five?
Let me look, see if I can find it here quick.
I did some quick math, if you bear with me.
So for number of days open to that question?
Yeah.
We're planning to open June second, and we are on track for that. And we're thinking as students are going back to school and school activities start up, we'll just wind it down mid-August. We don't have a hard date on that. We'll just play it by ear.
Roughly how many days? Be thirty, sixty, ninety?
Yeah, between seventy and ninety.
Once Bill comes up with a number, I just took a hundred and fifty thousand.
And I doubt, I'm looking on our website, I don't think I have that drilled down detail in that. I can run up to my office and grab it.
I'm gonna have a hundred and fifty thousand bucks divided by ninety, pardon me, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided by three sixty-five. Then you're gonna try to do that in ninety days. If you will, the attendance would have to be quite high. I'm just trying to figure out, is this dollar, two dollars of value compared to what the committee's brought? So having half the story, the income side is difficult for me to measure if I don't have the expense side.
You remember when we talked about the budget at that time? You know, our expenses were here, revenues were here, we were gonna subsidize that, I think wasn't it around a hundred and twenty thousand was what the, is in the budget to kick in on that? These rates are slightly higher than what that budget was built upon. Now, it's all assumptions, of course, but I did review when you gave me these from the park board the other day, they are slightly higher individual rates than what we had put in the budget.
So they take the hundred and twenty, one, two, three, divided by ninety days, that's thirteen hundred dollars a day, and you divide that by eight bucks. You need a hundred and sixty-six people every day, and there's gonna be rain days, there's gonna be et cetera. So I know it's not gonna break even, trust me, I don't, I do know that, but at the same time, I'm thinking if you go buy a quick meal at McDonald's, Dairy Queen, ice cream at Uncle Eddie's, you know, ten bucks is nothing. No, I understand.
There was discussion about that and having this be an introductory rate for the first year and then adjusting it accordingly in following years, but wanting to make it affordable to the citizens.
I'm just here for discussion.
Sure.
Your honor, can I ask a question?
Yep.
First of all, I think keeping it affordable is a huge thing for our community. I think the backlash that the Fargo community experienced was negative, and I think it's important that we keep this affordable. What is capacity for the pool each day? And are you limiting how many memberships are being sold for the season, or is it however many are needed?
Yeah, we'll sell as many as we can, for sure. Capacity is three hundred and some bodies on that pool deck, so it's a large number of people that can fit in that facility. Doesn't seem like there's enough space for that, but that's what the designers say that legal capacity is.
Your honor, Lynn, you said you had fourteen sites. How does this pool line up with those fourteen? Are we at the bottom end, the high end, right in the middle? How did it come out?
We are average, I would say. I can give you a couple examples. Belt Plane, their single is eighty dollars. Their daily is not listed. Wilmer, their single is ninety. Family is a hundred and seventy dollars. Fairbowl is seven dollars. Glencoe is seven dollars. Gaylord is seven. Hutchinson is eight. Red Wing is eight. Rush City is six. So we're tickling right in there with, that's basically an average across the state.
Has there been any conversation about doing a punch card for families to be able, if they don't do a membership, to do a punch card?
Yes.
Did I miss that somehow? I might have missed that.
Yeah, so in the fee schedule, there is a ten punch.
Oh, okay, now that you say that, yes, I saw that.
And there's a reduced rate, so...
For those. And then are those carryoverable to next year? Or are they just this year?
Yeah, they would be carry.
Carryover, okay.
There are a lot of details to work out, so there's gonna be questions to be answered throughout the season that we're gonna be just on the fly a little bit, but we're putting in a lot of time trying to have a good, smooth opening. We're purchasing equipment, planning for staff. We do have a full slate of lifeguards hired. We've got a manager and four senior lifeguards, twelve other lifeguards, of which eight need to be certified yet. And we have classes for certification lined up, coordinated through the YMCA and community ed. Those classes will be held March, April, and May. So pending successful passing of those classes, we'll have eight more lifeguards.
Any other questions?
Just one more, your honor. You know, I appreciate the community. I wasn't on the council and they voted on it, but the community voted loud that sixty percent wanted to have this done, and we want to make sure that it's done right and done in a great way. Have we looked into when you guys were designing and doing it to have any type of vendors there, any type of like you would at a hockey arena where you could have that leased out to where they serve hot dogs, chips, pop? Is that not part of this proposal?
Yeah, Councilman Mortensen, we do have an area set aside that was set up for food trucks, but we'll also have our own concession stand. So we'll sell, we'll have a hot dog roller, that'll be the extent of the food that we prepare. Otherwise, it'll be bags of chips, candy bars, that kind of food.
And is that staffed by someone that's hired? Like you said, one of the employees for this facility, or is that leased out to somebody else's third party?
They will be hired by the city as city staff, yeah. That is ongoing right now, seasonal staff hiring, and the admissions and concession staff are in that pool of staff that we'll be hiring now in the next few weeks.
One more thing, your honor, and then I'll quit. You'd set aside the ability to have naming rights on part of this facility, is that right? I seen in a packet that there was some naming right options, has that been discussed at all?
I think that was a suggestion, and then we have talked about it internally in staff meetings, that there's a policy that we could put out there. Gail had offered up a policy that the library adopted.
Okay, all right.
We would be open to that, though, if you wanted to implement a policy like that. There's a number of items that could be sponsored.
I think that should be something that should be looked in sooner than later, so if somebody wants to jump on that, if there's a local business or somebody who wants to do that, I think that would be a good way to offset some of these costs. Your honor, one more question. I've seen other pools have a two-tiered approach. If you're a citizen, it's X, and if you're not a citizen, it's Y. Has that been considered?
That actually was not considered.
And again, this is just for discussion. Will it be material? I don't know. But five bucks here, five bucks here, five bucks here, and if we have a hot summer, I hope it gets utilized.
Right. Yeah, not sure how would we would determine citizenship if they're residents of the city or not.
Kids would be difficult, but parents that came, a kid that came with a driver's license.
Right.
How do we, how do we gonna, how do you monitor like the seasonal pass? I mean, if somebody comes with a seasonal pass and then they give it to their friends?
Well, that's one of those questions that remains to be answered yet, but we're looking at a point-of-sale system that would track, so it'd be like a debit card where you'd scan, and a person would have to have that card with them each time they come to the pool, and it would be scanned. And hopefully, it's the right family using the card and getting it scanned.
Any other questions? If not, I believe we have a... Oh, sorry.
Dwayne Cookman, has anybody approached the local businesses? You know, like you have on a DeLagoon Park, you have your big banners, you know, the company banners. Would they be willing to support or donate? Might be an option.
I think that's something probably that we should push back to the park and rec. I mean, they seem to be able to do some of that for kind of like baseball fields and the likes of, or who does the baseball fields? Maybe you should ask that question.
Pam, Pam Wexfeldt, the recreation coordinator, she's recently sent out a letter soliciting sponsorships for ball fields and the like, so we'd do something similar just for that facility.
I mean, maybe that's the most direct avenue to go down.
When you referred to multiple things that could have naming rights, what were the things you were thinking of?
Music service, Spotify or Pandora.
Slides.
Slides, yeah, any of the amenities.
We did talk about banners on fences.
Yeah.
I mean, banners on fences might be the simple ones to get going.
Your honor, could we, could we continue this conversation with additional information? Are we gonna vote tonight for these are the rates?
I think they need a vote to get prices published, but, I mean, but you can push it down the road if you want.
Because you're shooting for June two.
We're shooting for June two, but the park and rec brochure needs to be published and put out to the public now, like by Thursday. I appreciate that.
Would it be possible that it could go into some other print media, even into a utility bill? Like I know some things have been sent out in utility bills. That might be an option. I think there's some, there's some questions here that haven't been answered and that we should really research a little bit. I think the advertising or not, or sponsorship, you know, and we talk sponsorship, you know, and this had come up some time ago. It was brought up that, you know, maybe we could go to some, some larger company, and if they want to sponsor that and have a naming right for maybe five years or three years with a certain number on that, which we would talk about and discuss. You know, let's say it was three hundred thousand dollars for five years or three years, I don't know. But then their, their business would be on there. If it's XYZ widget company, that's what it's called. I think that would be kind of like Target Field or whatever you want to call that. You know, it's just an option there that could maybe get, help offset some of the expense, and I know that this was designed not to make any money at first. I don't know if it will, but it's those things that we have to look at too, I think, to help defray some of the costs. And if we can maybe, like I, like I think Councilmember Leighton, to discuss it maybe a couple more times or at least once and go from there.
Your honor, is it something where, did, I agree that looking into the naming rights and things, revenue streams make sense to offset this for the, for the community, but I don't know that that would change, I don't know that we'll end up reducing these rates because of it, but can we, if people here want to vote on the rates, can we then make a second motion to direct the park board to look into the naming rights so we can at least set some parameters so families can plan to?
I think I would concur with what Laurel's saying. I think this year is very much gonna be a year of trial and kind of seeing what the, what the count is of people coming and understanding what the expectations actually are. We budgeted for this to be subsidized this year, so I think, as you say, we're not going to change, the change in rates isn't going to actually make probably a lot of difference to, to the budget, because we don't really know where it, where it will actually be. So I think, as you say, looking, and are we, and I think that's the discussion, is are we looking at if we get somebody, you know, if it's sponsorship or whatever, whatever that is, whether it's advertising or sponsorship, is that to offset the city's portion of subsidy? Or is that to reduce the rates for, you know, for entrance? And so I think in, in essence of time and getting something done, we should approve the rates this evening, and then, as you say, make a motion to direct the park board to look at advertising and sponsorship going forward. Bill?
As a side note with that, something was nagging at me about fundraising with this. So if it's looked at as fundraising, that usually has to be an outside group external from the city that actually does the fundraising. Minnesota statute, and we'd have to look this up and do our research, but Minnesota statute doesn't allow cities to fundraise, except for it looks like National Night Out and maybe for the firefighters, our fire chiefs here, but otherwise, so that fundraising thing, like if you're gonna go out and get donations, that'd have to be done by an external group, I believe. Again, I was just looking on the League of Cities, we'd have to do further research, but...
Would a naming right be a fundraiser?
Chances are, because you'd want it probably, I think in a, I'm looking at Gail from our previous policy, it's based on a dollar amount of a donation. So it gets, theoretically, if you're looking at a project, it would be the major donor for that project or something. Be hard to give naming rights to something, if you had someone give a million dollars here and you give naming rights for five thousand dollars, that would be difficult. But you can do as you choose, but we'd have to research the fundraising side more. I don't know off the top of my head, so...
Yeah, I, I'm not a legal scholar, for sure, I'll leave that to Mr. Nicomole, but when we're looking at naming rights, we're looking at an actual contract, a business contract that says, hey, you are liable for X number of dollars over the course of years. And so to me, a fundraiser or the donor looks a little bit different than actually having a contract with Lake Region Hospital or somebody like that, but I might be wrong.
We do that, like I said, with Pam and the sponsorships. That's exactly how we handle those, just a contract with an individual business owner.
I think, coming back to obviously the matter at hand, and that's setting the admission rates, we have a resolution on the, on the floor, so it would be a roll call to approve the rates, and then we can look for a motion to direct staff after that.
Joel? Yes.
Quammy?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Freymeyer?
Yes.
Mortensen?
Yes.
Gilby?
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to direct the park board to work with Pam and Ralph on what can be done legally for things that would help to offset the city's portion of subsidy for this, for naming rights.
Would there be a second for that?
Second.
Al, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of claims in the amount of two million, two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents. Would somebody care to make a resolution to approve paying the bills? Don't all jump up at once.
I can second.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laurel. Roll call, please.
Joel? Yes.
Quammy?
Yes.
Freymeyer?
Yes.
Mortensen?
Yes.
Gilby?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under all business, we have an update on utility rates, and we'll call upon our financial director, Bill Somwell.
You wanna just flip them for me? Thank you, your honor. This will be short, probably the shortest utility rate update you will see. I'm just gonna cut to the chase. We're not looking at making any further changes right now. We're just not at a point, you know, we talked about our capital projects at our council retreat, we need to talk about that more, and I'm just not comfortable that, you know, where are we going with those yet? So we did implement changes to the refuse fund because we needed to for the demo sale, get that going. We'll be coming back to you with bids on that. And then also, you know, we were seeing increases for the tipping fees, so the disposal of the garbage, so we got those done, but then sewer and water storm is what else we're talking about. So we changed those refuse ones in January. We haven't touched the tree management fee since March of 2017. Again, that is the fee to manage the tree waste at the landfill, not funding the Dutch Elm disease program for bollivar trees. It's ones that brought to the landfill, the managing of those, moving them around, using the dozer to do that, using the burner for that as well. And then, so sewer, water, and storm water, we changed last April. So the current capital improvement plan still includes that fast-track plan we've talked about over the last couple of years. It has slightly changed, worked with our city engineer on that, moving some projects around. I envision we'll be moving some more projects around and talking about that with you as a city council in the coming months. So we need to review that, get through that more, because this fast-track plan would mean larger tax levy increases, larger increases to the utility rates. That stands to reason, if you're gonna do a lot more projects, it's gonna cost more. So we're gonna defer any water, sewer, and storm water changes now in 2025. They would take place in April. We're not gonna do that. You'll still have some change when we reset rates for sewer in April, because it's based on the consumption of January, February, March. The rate that is applied to that consumption will stay the same, but if the consumption changed from a prior year, your sewer rate could change. But we're gonna look at reviewing the CIP. Also, I want to look at developing a five-year street reconstruction plan. That's a specific type of capital improvement plan for streets that will allow you as a council to bond for street projects when there aren't enough assessments to meet a twenty percent threshold. And then some of the ones we've looked at in this fast-track plan, that's gonna be the case. You know, we look like Cleveland Avenue or South Union, it's a very large project, reconstruction project, assessments won't reach twenty percent, and that's a Minnesota statute under 429 for that. So we're gonna look at updating these rate models, work through the CIP process in the coming months as we go through that 2026 budget process, and then let's get them implemented for January of 26. You know, so we're all have a good comfort level of where do you want to go with what street projects, what years, and how are we gonna pay for them? So, next slide. This just shows you a little history of what we've done in street projects versus what's in the fast-track plan. So simply wanted it for the value of showing, look at how much higher 25 through 29 are. And that's what we need to talk through, of which ones do you want to do, in what timeframe, because they are significantly larger than we've had. That again was that fast-track plan. It was intentionally put in to do more than we had been doing, but we need to work that out with you as a council of what you want to do and what time you want to do that. So we'll come back with that. Next slide. We have a few just showing sewer fund, if we didn't do anything, and you've seen these before, cash balance would continue to go down over the years because you'd be spending your savings account and not managing, you know, for the future. When we study this, we go over ten years. We do look out ten years to manage that. So next slide, Lynn. Same for water, a little sharper decline. We have some larger water projects to do in the midst of here as well. I know reservoirs, some refurbishing of our water towers, which is repainting them inside and out, so it's not just painting the outside, it's also the inside. Next slide for storm sewer, same scenario. This again, all these show this decline if we don't do anything with rates. So of course, as we plan ahead, we're gonna tell you, we're gonna have to have some inflationary increases, maybe even something larger to keep up with doing more projects. This just shows the average utility bill based on six thousand gallons of water, and where it stands right now, it's a one percent increase. That is the refuse increase that we did in January. So next slide. Then this shows a comparison, and I believe this is like a five-state area... slide. Then this shows a comparison, and I believe this is like a five-state area, where we fall, where Fergus Falls falls in line with others. So we'll bring more of that back to you. We'll study that through the tax levy committee, as well as we want to work through it with the council on a committee level, looking at our capital improvement plan. That might be the last slide, isn't it? So the update is, we're not recommending making any changes at this time. We'll work that through the budget.
Any questions, Bill?
Okay.
Bill, we talked in the past on if we save money in the budget to reduce real estate taxes, and you had this reserve, a fund reserve for each one of these. I would like to see those, if we're fully funded or not funded, at upcoming meetings.
Yep, we'll certainly, I'm kind of a broken record. You'll hear me talk about, we're in our audit prep season right now. So we're getting all our numbers finalized from, for two thousand twenty-four. Then we'll show what those fund balances are, and what they are in percentage bases of, like the general fund, how much do we have at the end of the year compared to what we spend in a year? And we have a policy on that, too, because, you know, you have to have money in the bank to cash flow. We will show all that when we bring the audit. And that's scheduled to come before you, the first meeting in June.
What year? No, I'm just kidding.
This year. We better not be that late.
Thank you, Bill. I look forward to those numbers.
Sounds good.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an update on the city-owned property located at five twenty-two East Hampton Avenue. Obviously, this, we, the city was approached to, by somebody to purchase this property. We did obviously go back and offer a counter with that at twenty-one thousand dollars. That obviously didn't, that transaction did not go through. Then it was offered to Habitat for Humanity, and they declined the property as well. So the question really that sits before the council now is, what, what's the desire of the council to do with this particular property? Do we look to, you know, engage a realtor to sell this property, or do we just want to sit on it and have city staff mow and mousse now for the rest of the time? So, Councilmember?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate it. When I look at this piece of property, I look at it from the city. It's not something that absolutely has to be sold at this moment. Would it be nice? It'd be great. But I'm looking at a little bit larger picture, that if this council decides to go down the route with an in-house economic development director, if that's the route that they go, I think you're going to hear quite a bit of stuff on the twenty-sixth from Casey out of West Fargo about land acquisition and land sales. And I think this piece of property, and any piece of property that the city has, would be something that an economic director would be entailed with. And I think she'll speak to how the city purchases land for development, and how the city gets rid of land for development. So I would say at this point, I'm in favor of just letting things ride to where they're at until the city can get a structure of where they're at with that type of a setup.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
I'll second.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
A motion that we sit on the property as is. Marcus is seconding that. Any other discussion? Scott?
It really doesn't change anything. We were sitting on it before, and we wouldn't have even had a offer to do anything with it had the person interested not come to us. So this doesn't really change anything. It was just whether or not we wanted to become more active. And I suppose it wouldn't hurt if we had put a sign in the yard saying for sale, but beyond that, I, I wouldn't expect us to actively spend any money or go any further, given this current conversation.
Your Honor, I'd agree with him. I don't know if we would need to actually hire a realtor. I think in-house, we could sell those things. We have legal counsel to help us close. We've got NF Fields. So if, if, after we determine our economic development goals and aspirations, and this property becomes sellable, I agree, just put a for-sale sign on it, either on the property and on the website, and let a developer, potential buyer, act on their own.
We do have a motion to leave it as is, so we should vote on that. So all those in favor say aye.
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 All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. There are no items of new business. There are some miscellaneous items. We obviously, next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, we'll have a follow-up with the economic development discussion. April second, a committee of the whole, and seventh, a council meeting. Council now will be going into a closed session.
Your Honor, I don't want to cut you off, but I have a, just a couple of comments when you're finished.
I'll, I'll just say that we, well, no, speak now, because then we can go into a closed session.
I, I just want to remind the council and the public that we will have, on the twenty-sixth of March, Casey Sanders Berglin from the West Fargo Economic Director, she'll actually personally be here for one of our work sessions. She'll be here from eight to nine on that day. And what she's asked is she'd like to see the council, if you have a bigger question or a bigger topic that you want to have her answer to. She asked that you email Lynn, and then Lynn possibly email her, if that's appropriate, with that question, so she's prepared. Specifically, if it's something about, something that was developed, or what the process was for something that you're aware of. She'd like to have those questions to her before the twenty-sixth, but is also open for any other questions. She, I won't speak for her, but she was very appreciative of her time with us on the twelfth. She felt that it was time well-served by her. She's very excited to come on the twenty-sixth to continue the discussion and the journey that Fergus Falls is looking at. So I just wanted to let the council and the public know that.
Thank you. And then Laura, did you have a comment on the?
Yes. I had a phone call from a resident in Ward One yesterday, and wanted to give a big thank you to the street department. There was a divot on Sheridan, and he reached out, and they had to sign there within twenty-four hours, so that we could caution everybody to slow their speed down. So big thank you to that department for getting that out right away.
I have something to add.
Kudos.
On that as well. Two Saturdays ago, had three people contact me within half an hour, and was able to reach out to Andrew. We had some parts of the canopies down at Magnussen Park that had bolts missing on them, and they were fixed very quickly. And so thank you to the public for also noticing that, and for Andrew for getting someone there. I mean, I think someone was there within ten minutes, and that's wonderful for kids and safety.
Thank you. Now, we will be journeying for a closed meeting to discuss the potential real estate sale at nine twenty-five Western Avenue, as allowed by Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five. We will most likely be opening the meeting back again, depending on, obviously, whether there's anything to vote on, but it's, at this time, the theory is we will open back up again. So with that, the council meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into closed session. Thank you.